Kathy, I'm going to be chairing for Human Services just to you.
Thank you, Matthew. I was wondering if you were making it today?
I am not, sorry.
My two-month-old grand, uh, great-grandson Matthew has been twice at CCMC since he has been born.
Oh, no, I hope he's okay.
Well, we're working on it.
Hang in there.
So, uh, so good afternoon, everybody. We're gonna call the public hearing for the, let's see if I can federal selective provider contracting waiver renewal application under section nineteen fifteen B four of the Social Security Act for Early Intervention Services pursuant to early and periodic screening, diagnostic, and treatment. And, um, Representative Walker, do you have any comments?
No.
No.
I don't know who's showing, that's not me, but no, I don't. Thank you. Good to see everybody.
Thank you. Representative Nuccio?
No, ma'am, I do not.
Senator Summers? Senator Lesser?
Good to see you today, Madam Chair.
Representative Gilchrist? Uh, Representative Case? I know you're on, I saw you. And Senator Perillo? Okay, no comments. We're gonna go right into it. Are you guys coming up together? Very good. Okay, the floor is yours. We have both Commissioner Barton Reeves and Commissioner Bai at the table. Ladies?
All right. Good afternoon, co-chairs, ranking members, and members of the Appropriations and Human Services Committees. I am Andrea Barton Reeves, Commissioner of the Department of Social Services. I'm here today in partnership with Commissioner Beth Bai of the Office of Early Childhood, so that together we may request that your committees approve our requests pursuant to section seventeen B of the Connecticut General Statutes as it relates to the Contracting Waiver Renewal for Early Intervention Services, also known as Birth to Three in the state of Connecticut. OEC is the lead agency that administers the Birth to Three program in Connecticut pursuant to Part C of the Federal Individuals with Disabilities Act, otherwise known as the IDIA. And as we all know, DSS is the Single State Medicaid Agency administering the state's Medicaid program. This waiver will allow the OEC to continue to manage the number of early intervention services in each community. We know that families in Connecticut have benefited from these services by providing comprehensive, coordinated Birth to Three programs in their communities for over twenty-five years, and this waiver renewal preserves that approach. OEC carefully monitors access to these services to ensure there are enough Birth to Three providers in each community who provide high-quality and timely services and can respond quickly to the needs when they are identified. I am pleased today to be here with Commissioner Beth Bai of the Office of Early Childhood, and I will now turn it over to Commissioner Bai to provide details on the waiver renewal. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll just continue with the testimony. We know that most children transition quickly from Birth to Three to their public schools, and these relationships between the providers and the public schools are really important for that. We also know that it's important for the families to have those positive relationships with the public schools, and we think this waiver, the way that we do things in Connecticut, works, and that this waiver is important to ensure that. It's also important to make sure we have a sufficient caseload to maintain and remain current and compliant with the federal requirements for properly providing early intervention services. Birth to Three is an entitlement, so it is a program that we have to provide for families, and in Connecticut, we very much want to. What we can do with the
I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm sorry. Commissioner Bai, we can't hear you on the Zoom. Like, can you just bring your microphone a little closer, please?
Is that better?
Oh, that's so much better. Thank you so much.
Certainly. When, because the OEC goes out to RFP, we can manage the number of early intervention services in communities and be able to effectively monitor the quality of services with federal requirements at a lower administrative cost as compared to if no waiver were in effect. Specifically, as required by section six sixteen A two of IDEA, each state's early intervention program, including Connecticut's Birth to Three system, must have procedures for the lead agency, that is, OEC, to supervise and monitor providers' implementation of the IDEA requirements. The lead agency supervision must include targeted technical assistance and PD, effective dispute resolution, integrated monitoring activities, including correction, incentives, and sanctions, public reporting of annual compliance and results stated by program, annual local program IDEA determinations, and fiscal management. The only purpose of this waiver renewal is to continue enabling OEC to manage the number of Birth to Three providers in each community. This waiver must be renewed every two years. The waiver renewal does not change Medicaid coverage for payment for Birth to Three services, which are detailed in the federally approved Medicaid state plan. DSS and OEC published notice for a thirty-day comment period on this waiver renewal and did not receive any comments. In addition, DSS distributed the materials to representatives of two federally recognized tribes in Connecticut. This waiver does not have a unique or particular impact on tribal members. We respectfully request the Appropriations and Human Services Committee approve their request to enable DSS and OEC to submit the selective provider contracting waiver renewal to CMS. DSS and OEC are here and happy to answer your questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any changes made in the underlying waiver?
No, this just maintains the waiver as it has been.
And, um, both of you indicated that Birth to Three was provided in every district. Do you have the amount of programs that are in every district by their names and addresses? Is there any way that we can get that, or is that in every school?
It's not a school-based program, but some schools do run Birth to Three. But yes, we could get you who covers each catchment area, because there's not a unique one in every town. They generally get a region. So we can tell you who supports each town easily. We can get you that list.
Okay, thank you. And we'll, if you could send it to Madam Administrator, and she can send it out to both committees. Are there any comments or questions? Senator Lesser?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the two Commissioners. Just a question. I understand from Commissioner Bai's testimony that the bill does, the bill that the waiver renewal obligation does not make any changes to reimbursement rates, because that has to be addressed with the state plan amendment, not through the waiver renewal, and I understand that. But I do know that the OEC had conducted a rate review study about rates with the Birth to Three program, and that the governor had proposed increasing rates. Can you just let us know what the, with the, with the status is of that and where we are in the process?
Yes, we had proposed an increase. That increase was not funded entirely in the final budget. So there, there was some increase. We had done a rate study, which recommended tiered reimbursement rates to reimburse different professionals at different rates. And so, but the way that it was approved by appropriations, there is no tiered rates. There isn't increase, but not the increase at the level that was proposed because of some of the challenges with the budget. And if you want more specific details, I can ask Nicole Cosette to come up and give you very specific details on that.
Senator Lesser?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that information. Just, I would like to specifically be interested in when that state plan amendment is likely to come forward, when those increases are likely to, you know, pass on to providers. I'm sure they're interested in, in sort of understanding that.
In the Medicaid state plan amendment?
Yes, exactly.
I'm not clear that that is a proposal, but I turn to my colleague.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Senator. No, it isn't. Our roles solely here is, in this context, is just to assure that the waiver is filed, so that we can continue to provide access to providers. There is, there was no plan to amend the state plan amendment with respect to rates for the reasons that Commissioner Bai had articulated.
All set, Senator?
I am. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are there any other comments or questions for the two Commissioners? Seeing none. It's not hard to look around the room. It's just Representative Fongello hit me. I got this one down pat. So, um, Commissioners, you're all set. If you wouldn't mind staying in the room for what I consider might be a very brief meeting, in case something comes up. Up next is Cindy Jackson. Is Cindy Jackson online? Cindy?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Senator Austin, Senator Walker, Senator Lesser, and other distinguished members. I am Cindy Jackson. I'm chairperson of the Birth to Three Interagency Coordinating Council. I'm here to speak in support of the federal selective provider contracting waiver under section nineteen fifteen B four. As a birth, excuse me, as a Birth to Three provider, and as Commissioner Bai explained, it is a rigorous process to respond to the RFP and then be awarded the contract with OEC to provide Birth to Three services in particular towns that you're contracted to provide services in. Programs must then sign a forty-page State of Connecticut Purchase of Service Contract, which outlines specifically the fiscal and programmatic requirements. Programs must adhere to very specific personnel standards, as outlined in the Procedure Section found on the Birth to Three website. Let's see. We are then, these standards include entry-level degrees, licensure, certification, supervision requirements, and job responsibilities as an early intervention provider. There are training requirements regardless of the provider's professional degree. The Birth to Three providers must then obtain an initial certificate to provide Birth to Three services in the state, regardless of if you're working one hour or the forty hours a week. The Birth to Three provider then must, then must be trained as a service coordinator so you can provide that service during your visit. This includes over ten hours of webinars, passing a test, and then attending an eight-hour in-person training. Furthermore, contracted Birth to Three providers must then comply with all applicable federal and state laws and regulations governing Birth to Three services, including the federal IDEA requirements, FERPA, and HIPAA requirements. Contracted programs must also comply with all Birth to Three interagency agreements, memorandums of understanding, policies, procedures, memorandums, forms, and guidance documents as found on the Birth to Three websites. Then there is extensive monitoring, auditing, and technical assistance by OEC staff that ensures that these requirements are met. This waiver is essential to continue high-quality services that meet the needs of all Birth to Three children with Medicaid funding. So it's not everyone that could, you know, have a degree and then bill for Birth to Three services in the state. This is why this waiver is so important. And in regards to Senator Austin's question to the Commissioner, each Birth to Three program, there is a Birth to Three program in every town that's assigned. The way our contracts work, we are not allowed to have a waiting list in Connecticut. So if you're up in that town and a family gets referred to Birth to Three, you are required to take that family. You're required to do an evaluation and provide services if they're eligible within forty-five days of the, of getting that referral. So there are a lot of safeguards in place so that families do have a provider. I think everyone knows, as Senator Lesser mentioned, we, we've had workforce and work, work retention issues. That's why we, you know, we're trying to look at our rates. However, we are still required to meet those, you know, intake requirements regardless of what our staffing issues are. Thank you.
Well, thank you. You, any questions or comments? Thank you.
Kathy?
Kathy?
Yes. I'm sorry, Senator, Senator Austin. Just a couple of questions. So that's a large, large requirement for you to become certified for, for the program. I understand the, the needs of making sure that people are qualified so that we make sure that the kids are getting the services that we feel are appropriate. But it's a forty-page document?
Yes. It is a forty-page document. And it is, I've been doing this for over forty years in the state, and every year there's more contractual requirements. This contract has more requirements. It's actually being signed right in the process of, you know, being out to programs for signature. And it is the most extensive one I've seen as far as our requirements within the state, what are requirements as a program to meet the contract. It has increased significantly every, every two years or every, every time we sign it. And this year is even more requirements at a time where it's really hard to, you know, provide these services within the state and going forward, you know, with, with where we are financially in the state.
Can I just ask one quick more question? How underfunded, understaffed are you right now in this, in this area?
In, um, in my area, in my particular, in the state, I would say
Excuse me, everybody. Just so everybody knows, she is not a state agency. She is only running one
Okay, I'm sorry.
Services. So she's not going to know a statewide issue.
Thank you. If you give me your, what your
Yeah, I, I think the two areas, and I speak for myself, but most as we talk as programs, is speech-language pathologists are really hard to find bilingual, bilingual. Both special ed teachers are very hard to find. So those are the two areas. I know social work is another, we are staffed in social work, but social work is another area that's very difficult to, to find staffed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Representative Santiago?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Hi, Cindy.
Hi.
Um, I want to, I know that the Birth to Three program is something that I've been advocating for behind the scenes to get more funding. It's a very important program, especially for the intervention of children before they get into school. And I'm seeing that your contracts are very extensive, as you're saying. Do you remember the amount that you might have gotten in the new budget for this year, for the next two years?
I think, and I know Elaine is on too, I, I can get to the specific
Okay.
But I think it was three point two increase in both OEC and the the state, because our Medicaid, because it's a match. We also have what's called a general administrative payment. That was decreased by a million dollars. That's kind of extra, that's not extra, but it's money to use towards things that Medicaid and insurance do not pay, that we are required to do as, in that list of all these things. So there was a significant decrease from, from what, what was in the rate study to what was, you know, in some of the the budgets. I don't know other terms, but what was finally
She's not going to know what was in the budget, but there was six point seven million across OEC and DSS, two point nine million state share and DSS Medicaid.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. The, if, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Um, if, if that was decreased, in the general administration money was decreased, and it, it's, it, that was supposed to pay for people that are not Medicaid or Medicaid doesn't pay. Will that lessen the, the amount of families or children that you're going to be able to reach out to?
No, it's an entitlement program. So we have an eligibility criteria within the state. Every child that's referred by a parent, doctor, childcare agency, wherever, they are entitled to an evaluation, and if they meet eligibility criteria, we are required to provide a program for them until they turn three, as long as they have needs. And then we transition them to school. So it is entitlement.
Okay, great. I will, I mean, there's a couple more questions that I have, but I can follow. I can get in touch with you and do that offline, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Cindy, for being here today.
Representative Hughes?
Madam Chair, I'm just wondering, with that decrease in administration, does that create a bigger burden on, you know, filling out that, this forty-page contract? Is there any technical assistance from OES or, you know, Office of Early Childhood or DSS to support providers in getting through that application process?
So, Commissioner, do either one of you have an answer for that one? Because that's not her issue. Do you guys have anything? Beth? The Commissioners are coming up.
Hi, Kathy.
Representative Kennedy is in the room now, too. We're up to three.
Thank you for that question, Representative. We do provide some PD and support as programs need it. That's, that's part of our, our system. I can have Nicole Cosette give more details if you'd like, but that's the short answer.
I guess I'm wondering if, if providers know that, how they know that, that there is some technical support?
Yep, I can ask Nicole to come up and explain how it works. And Nicole, just introduce yourself.
Good afternoon. I'm Nicole Cosette, and I'm the Part C Coordinator here in Connecticut and lead the Birth to Three system. Our office provides professional development, and providers know through various ways. So there is technical assistance provided as part of our monitoring process, and providers are notified of which tier they would fall into, and they would be supplied certain technical assistance to IDEA and the requirements through that avenue. But we also provide global professional development trainings. For example, service coordination is one. So our providers would then, new staff go through the service coordination training, learn about IDEA and the program for new EIS personnel, and they would then become a service coordinator in our system. And then there's other more global professional development that we would supply at recommendations, sometimes by our providers. They would request that we bring in a certain national expert on a topic, and we would then provide that to them.
That's helpful. Thank you. All set, Representative? Alrighty. I see no other questions for this one. We're going to go on to the next to speak is, I think you're all set, Cindy. The next person is Tiffany Elaine. Is Tiffany Elaine on? Next, we would go up to Elaine Ballsley.
Yeah, you pronounced that correctly. Thank you. Senator Austin, Senator Walker, and other distinguished members of the committee. I am, my name's Elaine Ballsley. I'm the Director of Reach Out, which is a Birth to Three agency in the southern, southern central part of Connecticut. And I am in support of the provider waiver. I'm not going to repeat what Cindy said. I have similar feelings. It's a very specific and rigorous training that you need to be an early intervention provider, sort of beyond what your credentials are as an occupational therapist or physical therapist, speech-language pathologist. And I think it's important that the waiver stays in place to, to provide really good early intervention services.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? Or Elaine? Well, I think you got off easy, Elaine. We already grilled Cindy, so you're all set.
Cindy went first.
There you go. So you're all set. So that is the, this will be the end of our public hearing. We're going to close the public hearing. Okay. I would suggest that everybody text their respective committee members in both Human Services and Appropriations. Votes are not left open. They are not left open for anybody. They are not left open. So can you take time? We're going to hold off for a minute or so to start the committee meeting. But you all need to understand that we are not leaving votes open, so you need to contact your committee members. Madam Administrator, while we have everybody's attention before we start the committee meeting, could you please let them know that we are going to be doing a bunch of spas and meetings over the next month or so, month and a half? That, that, just so people can be prepared, that they, that they should know that this is going to happen.
Well, I'm not sure about spas, Madam Chair, but I do know we are going to be meeting on block grant allocation.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The, hopefully, the community, small cities' community development block grant plan sometime in July. And the Health and Human Services block grant plans, and additionally, the LIHEP plan in early August. The agencies now have a deadline of April, April, I'll be all right, August eighteenth to submit the plans to the federal government. So that timetable has been moved up. So we are gonna with no, thank you, Commissioner, with no extensions. So we have to get the block grants dealt with before April eighth, August eighteen.
Don't you really want us to be in April, because you want the end of the next session, be all done?
So bejeezily hot. I really love April. So, uh, we will, our fingers crossed, our plan is to try and get committee meetings, public hearings scheduled in one day for LIHEP and the Health and Human Services plans. And as I said, the other hope is to do the CDBG block allocation plan in July. So that's what's on the horizon.
Thank you. Senator Lesser, I believe that the first committee up is yours.
Yes, Madam Chair, could you just hold on for one second? I'm just trying to coordinate something on our, just with our members real quick.
Senator Lesser, I, I contacted all Senate Democrats in both Approves and Human Services by text. Senator Lesser, I, I contacted all Senate Democrats in both approaches and human services by text.
Yes, thank, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, we were just trying to make sure that all of, all of our members had the link. So I, hopefully, they are, they will, they'll get it soon. We're just a little short-staffed today. At this point, I'd like to convene the June twentieth meeting of the Human Services Committee. And at this point, I would like to ask for a motion and a second to approve the federal selective provider contracting waiver renewal application under section nineteen fifteen B four of the Social Security Act for Early Intervention Services pursuant to early and periodic screening, diagnostic, and treatment. Is there a motion and a second?
So move, so move by Santiago.
Motion by Representative Santiago, seconded by Representative Hughes. Is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'd like the clerk to please take the roll.
Representative Gilchrist. Senator Lesser.
Senator Lesser in the affirmative.
Representative Case.
Representative Case votes yes.
Thank you. Senator Perillo. Representative Comey. Senator Mar.
Senator Mar votes yes.
Senator Anwar.
Senator Anwar votes yes.
Representative Butler. Representative Dayton. Representative D'Amico.
Rep. D'Amico votes yes.
Representative Fortier.
Representative Fortier votes yes.
Senator Gaston.
Senator Gaston votes yes.
Representative Hughes.
Representative Hughes votes yes.
Representative Johnson.
Just so, excuse me, I'm sorry. Senator Gaston is under the name Senator Mar online, so.
We can, we'll change that.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Representative Johnson votes yes.
Thank you. Representative Kit.
Representative Kit votes yes.
One more time, please.
Representative Kit votes yes.
Thank you. Representative Masto Francesco. Representative Meskers.
Representative Meskers votes yes.
Representative Pizzuto.
Rep. Pizzuto votes yes.
Representative Santiago.
Santiago votes yes.
Representative Scott.
Representative Scott votes yes.
Representative Sheikh.
Representative Sheikh votes yes.
Representative Stewart.
Representative Stewart votes yes.
Representative Vale. Are there any other members of the Human Services Committee who have yet to cast their vote and would like to do so?
The clerk will please announce the tally.
Total voting sixteen, total yay sixteen, zero nay, zero abstentions, zero absent and not voting.
The Human Services Committee stands in recess.
The Human Services Committee is recessed?
It is.
Representative Kennedy, do you have a question? Did anybody not vote in the last? Yeah. Just want to make sure we have the correct tally on the record.
Thank you, Representative Kennedy. Sorry about that. Total voting sixteen, sixteen yay, zero nays, zero abstentions, seven absent and not voting.
I, I was wondering about that, Madam Clerk, but I didn't want to.
Thank you.
Your ma.
So we're going to go into appropriations. So the Appropriations Committee is convened and I'm asking for a motion and a second to approve the federal selective provider contracting waiver renewal application under section nineteen fifteen B four of the Social Security Act for Early Intervention Services pursuant to early empiriotic screening, diagnostic, and treatment. Is there a motion? Representative Funicello. Representative Kennedy, they beat you all online people to the punch.
Always do.
Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Madam Administrator, could you please call the roll? Senator Austin votes in the affirmative.
Representative Walker. Representative Walker votes yes. Senator Hartley. Senator Kushner. Representative Exum. Representative Paris. Senator Summers.
Summers votes yes.
Representative Nuccio.
Nuccio votes yes.
Representative Ackert.
Representative Ackert votes yes.
Thank you. Senator Anwar.
Senator Anwar votes yes.
Representative Baker.
Representative Baker votes yes.
Representative Belton.
Belton votes yes.
One more time for me, ma'am.
Belton votes yes.
Thank you. Senator Berthel, good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Madam Administrator, and happy first day of summer. I vote in the affirmative.
Thank you. Representative Balinski.
Representative Balinski votes yes.
Representative Brown.
Representative Brown votes yes.
Representative Candelaria. Representative Corpus.
Rep. Corpus votes yes.
Representative Dayton. Representative DiCaprio.
DiCaprio votes yes.
Representative DeFranzo.
DeFranzo votes yes.
Representative Delaney. Representative Dylan.
Representative Dylan votes yes.
Representative Felipe.
Representative Felipe votes yes.
Senator Flexer.
Senator Flexer votes yes.
Representative Foncello.
Representative Foncello votes yes.
Representative Garibay.
Representative Garibay votes yes.
Representative Gibson.
Representative Gibson votes yes.
Representative Gilchrist. Representative Gonzalez.
Representative Gonzalez votes yes.
Senator Gordon.
Good afternoon. Senator Gordon votes yes.
Thank you, sir. Representative Hadad.
Representative Hadad votes yes.
Thank you. Senator Harding. Representative Hoxa. Representative Johnson.
Representative Johnson votes yes.
Representative Cavros de Grau.
Cavros de Grau votes yes.
Representative Kennedy.
Kennedy votes yes.
Representative Khan.
Representative, Representative Khan votes yes.
Representative Leeper. Senator Lesser.
Senator Lesser, yes.
Representative Martinez. Yeah, I see you, Representative Martinez. Oh, did you freeze? Yeah, we can't hear you for some reason. I'm going to swing back to Representative Martinez. Representative, I'm sorry, Senator Marx.
Marx votes yes.
Representative McCarthy Vehi.
McCarthy Vehi votes yes.
Senator McCrory. Representative Nolan.
Nolan in the affirmative.
Representative Pavel Tomato.
Pavel Tomato votes yes.
Representative Reyes.
Representative Reyes in the affirmative.
Representative Rosario.
Representative Rosario in the affirmative.
Representative Ryan.
Representative Ryan votes yes.
Well, I need your camera on, sir.
Yes, still.
Thank you, sir. Representative Manny Sanchez. Representative James Sanchez.
Representative James Sanchez votes yes.
Representative Sims.
Hello, Madam Secretary, Senator Austin. I like to contest that no one beats me to a punch, but I like to vote in affirmative.
Thank you, sir. Senator Slapp.
Thank you. I can't beat that, but Senator Slapp votes yes. Thanks, everyone.
Senator Winfield.
Senator Winfield in the affirmative.
And Representative Martinez, let's try again. Representative Paris, are you with us? He's gone now. Okay. Representative Martinez?
Can mark that we saw her but couldn't hear her.
Manny Sanchez, hello?
Susan.
Hi. Oh. Oh.
Sorry, I'm in.
Go quickly. Say yes or no.
Representative Sanchez votes yes.
Thank you, sir. All right. One more time, Representative Martinez, one more time. And if not, ma'am, if we can't resolve this, we will, you can tell me, you can send me an email. There you are.
Representative Martinez votes yes.
We're going, we saw you, so we're going to take it. Is that all right, Madam Chair?
Yes, and I can see her, too.
Great. Okay. Representative Paris.
Representative Paris, no phone in his hands, Madam Administrator, votes yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Senator Lesser, did you have a question?
I'll, I'll wait until the humans.
Why don't you go over there and measure first, but that way you don't have to.
That's Representative Baker.
Is, are, is there any member of the Appropriations Committee who has not yet voted who would like to do so now?
Madam Administrator, if you could call the roll, I mean, call the tally, whatever. Something.
Something. That was a workout, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
Total number voting forty-two, those voting yay forty-two, those voting nay zero, those abstaining zero, those absent not voting eleven.
Thank you, Madam Administrator. As I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Representative Funicello seconded by Representative Kennedy. Is there anybody who objects to that? Seeing nobody, the Appropriations Committee is adjourned. Senator Lesser.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to call back to order the Human Services Committee meeting. And at this point, I'd like to note for the record that Representative Butler was having trouble. He said he had technical issues attending the vote. And I know that the vote is closed, but is there a way, Madam Clerk, to have him noted in the record as intending to have voted in the last?
So Senator Lesser and Representative Butler. If Representative. No, turn, turn off mics, please, everybody. If Representative Butler would please contact Taylor. Taylor is filling in for the Human Services Clerk today. And let her know how he would have voted had he not had technical difficulties. The minutes of the Human Services Committee can reflect how he would have voted. Does that work? We will note that he had technical difficulties and then we will, Taylor will reflect how he would have voted had he been able to.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk, Madam Administrator, I apologize. And at this point, I would like to adjourn the Human Services Committee.
I'm sorry, Representative Comey is here. Did I miss the vote?
You, you did, Representative Comey.
If you were having technical difficulties attending it, you can reach out to Taylor, the stand-in committee clerk who's working for us. And she will reflect in the meeting minutes how you would have voted had you not had those technical difficulties. And at this point, I would like to adjourn the Human Services Committee meeting if there is no objection. Seeing no objection, the meeting stands adjourned.
Thank you, everybody. Have a nice day.